Good evening, I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting for the City Council of the City of Calistoga. It is Tuesday, March 19th at 6:01 PM. City Clerk Kamacho Werby, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Thank you very much. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kraus?
Here.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Vice Mayor Dunstford?
Excused absence.
And Mayor Canning?
Present, thank you very much. If you'll please all stand for a salute to the flag. Upon conclusion of the pledge allegiance, we'll take a moment in memory of those that were killed and impacted by the incident in Christchurch, New Zealand, and in Utrecht, Netherlands.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to oral communication on consent items or non-agendized items. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes so that all speakers have the opportunity to address the city council. I do not have any speaker cards, but if there's anyone wishing to address the council, please step forward. Should you so choose, but you are not required, please share with us your name and your address and limit your comments to a maximum of three minutes. Thank you.
Yes, I have a handout for you, and I'd like to speak to some issues. Okay, what I've handed you is some of the history of the Calistoga drinking water that I've been involved with, and I wanted to run through it. And the first item there was, in December 1995, I petitioned Bruce Burton, the engineer of our drinking water division, to overlook the proposed development, which was Mount Washington Sellers and Resort. And it became Solage, as you know it. That development was flying under the radar to the drinking water division. They never received, if you read it, any EIR from the clearinghouse where our planners send it, and I have those in yellow for you. And in it, it has a solution. If you're going to be building a project out there, you're going to have to put in a 750,000 gallon storage tank. Secondly, if you can't demonstrate more water, then nothing can be built. So what happened out there is a tank that's 1.5 thousand gallons, million gallons, I mean, pardon me, and that tank, of course, is now consumed by Solage. And that was a few years later from my inquiry. The next item to Bruce was done in 2011, and Guy Shot, one of his engineers who had made a visit to our city and looked it over, and this was specific to the North Bay Aqueduct with regards to inspection records, and also the cross connections, meters, hookups, plans, everything. And if you read through them, they're all highlighted, they had no records of any of it, none. This became a grand jury item, and as you know, at the time, we had Dan Takasuki, our city engineer.
Thirty seconds, sir.
He was taken in front of the grand jury, along with the county engineer who could not supply any as-built records to this water main that supplies our town. It's the main water main that brings the water to the town. So grand jury had me write the questions for questioning both men, both engineers, and within three days, the county engineer quit and went to another job in another county. And three months later, Takasuki quit, $28,000 bonus from our town.
You're at three minutes.
And he got lifetime legal services from our current city attorney.
Thank you.
So the fourth item we have here.
You're beyond your three minutes.
Oh, I had some handout time.
I didn't start.
Fourth item is the most important.
You're at three minutes and 30 seconds, sir. Wrap it up in 10 seconds, please.
Yeah. The fourth one is on the supply of water to our town. That was done in April 19th, 2018. It shows that we can produce 700 gallons a minute out of the Dunaweele Pump Station, yet we are consuming a maximum day of 1.33 million gallons. And my argument is, with the infill at this time, Silver Rose coming online.
You're at four minutes.
And apartment houses, we're out of spec for water.
Okay.
That's my point.
Thank you.
So I'm going to continue petitioning on this item.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? All right, I will close oral communication, and we'll entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda as presented.
So moved.
Seco.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, we have a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez Ortega.
I just had a brief comment. If we can, in the near future, if we can get some report of what's going on of the Upper Valley disposal and recycle plant. Somebody mentioned to me that they are covering a good portion of the land with, they're covering a lot of garbage. And the concern is that eventually, when all this garbage and disintegrate, we will contaminate, we will start washing down the land below. So it's just somebody from the community that mentioned that to me. I have no being up there, so if we can just get a report about what's happening there. Because he mentioned to me that you can see it from the road, you know, how it's changing up there.
I sit on the, represent the City of Calistoga on that authority, the Upper Valley Waste Management Authority. It is a, for everyone who may not know, it's a JPA, Joint Powers Authority, with all of the communities in Yountville North for waste management and recycling. And we had our March Board meeting yesterday, and this topic came up. They have been cited for a few violations in January and February specific to this topic. So the LEA, which is an officer of the county who inspects, has found them in violation, and they are taking some actions to address those, as well as several other issues that they're still working through regarding the fire from last summer. So it's very high on the county's radar screen, it's very high on UVA's radar screen, and the company has been put on notice that they need to take these actions quickly. Okay? And we can provide formal reports if need be. Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraus?
Yes, I've received some complaints with regard to the house that had a fire in it on Grant Street. While the house is boarded up, there's a pile of debris out in the front yard there. Besides being an eyesore, it's potentially harborage for rodents. I believe this was brought to the attention of code enforcement officer, I believe that would be the place. But this was about a week ago or so that I received this, and I did not contact the code enforcement officer, but I suggested that that person do that, and I drove by tonight, and it's still a mess. The place is boarded up, which is, which they're required to do, but the junk out in the front yard is bad.
All right, thank you. I have no comments this evening, but we'll go to the city manager's report.
Just two brief comments. Many of you are aware that there was an overturned propane hauler today on Highway 128. Calistoga Police Department and Fire Department went and provided emergency response. Bold Knapp and Sonoma Counties did decide to evacuate the area just out of an abundance of caution. They used the fairgrounds as an evacuation center. Since then, they've already opened up the road, cleaned up the spill. I don't believe we had people staying at the fairgrounds. I did hear word that there were some trailers, horse trailers, for the evacuation. We're very grateful our local police department and fire department could help respond. Just two brief items that I want to share, just give council update on. Couple of months ago, city council approved purchase of some new vehicles. Those vehicles are now starting to come in and be delivered. We have a new patrol vehicle out back behind the police station. Also, the new van for the Parks and Rec Department was received the other day. So we're very grateful for some of these new vehicles, which are removing some of the city's oldest pieces of equipment from its fleet. And then lastly, about a month and a half ago, I provided a, there was a presentation about a community microgrid. We've been working diligently on the professional services agreement about exactly what the scope of work is going to look like. I want to be very clear that what I've asked the consultants to do is to provide, I'll call it a path forward, if you will, for the city council to consider about what it would take to do a microgrid. It's not specifically what projects specific we can do. It's more about, from a 30,000-foot view, give us an assessment of what Calistoga can do to create a microgrid. In that same time period, I've had very interesting conversations with PG&E, which is also very open to the idea and the concept. And I think, you know, just for anyone who's not aware, we need to become more prepared for public safety power shutdowns to happen more regularly. That is the approach that PG&E is taking. They've also been filing their wildfire mitigation plans with the CPUC to do that as well. You know, in this year and in years to come, we do anticipate PG&E intentionally shutting off the power more often than they have before. So we're certainly working hard to try and find other solutions which could be available for city council discussion. That's my update today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just to that PG&E comment on the PSPS, they are petitioning the CPUC to allow for shutdowns in Zone 2, not just Zone 3, which, as you all know, we are surrounded by basically the red zone in Tier 3 in terms of risk. And that's what they shut down our transmission lines coming into town because they cross those. They're now petitioning an even more conservative approach, where Zone 2, which is what the city falls into, would qualify for a mandatory shutdown if they activate a PSPS. So to the city manager's point, there will be more of these, not fewer of these. So we need to be working through that. The microgrid concept is one of the, one of many things we're going to have to attempt and take a look at. All right. Anything else, Don? Okay, thank you. All right, under Proclamations and Presentations, tonight we have two. The first one is an informational update on the AT&amp;T Pathway Project and Pioneer Park Pedestrian Bridge Project. Taking us through this will be Director Kern, no, Gloria. Director Kern, welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Mike Kern, Public Works Department. I'll keep this real short. AT&amp;T Pathway is basically a connecting walkway that will go from Lincoln Avenue to the parking lot behind the fire station. It will provide a connectivity to a future reinstallation of the bus stop for the Napa-Vine 29 Route and Route 10. The plans are done for that, and I'm trying to figure out the best way to get it constructed. My goal is to have it finished within the next four months or so. So, very aggressive, but that's my goal.
Thank you very much.
So Pioneer Park Pedestrian Bridge, that's one that's been on everybody's radar screen for a long time. This one is basically a bridge that will connect this activity center to Pioneer Park. It's got multiple purposes, primary of which is to provide that walkability and connectivity to those two activity centers. It will also facilitate the future removal of what I call the low-water crossing, which is a passive fish barrier in the eyes of the Department of Fish and Wildlife and IMS. We have a $200,000 grant to put that in through NVTA, that's the Napa Valley Transportation Authority. That grant is funded in two fiscal year cycles. It's called TDA III money, and it's basically a pot of money that the NVTA gets, and then they award it to competitive projects with the intent to kind of share the money to all of the smaller agencies. So Yountville, St. Helene, and Calistoga, and American Canyon are primarily the recipients of those funds. This last funding cycle, they did a call for projects for a three-year funding cycle. So everybody threw their projects in the hat, if you will, and they figured out a way to fund everybody. Unfortunately, our funding is split over two fiscal years. So I can't build half a bridge.
Is that problematic? I'm no engineer, but...
A little bit. So in fiscal year 19 and 20, so 19, 2019 and 2020, which is July 1st coming up, we'll have $82,600. The next fiscal year, 2020, 2021, we'll get another $117,000. At that point, we'll have what I believe to be sufficient funds to build the bridge. So I can't really start until I have those funds in place. But what we've done, we've been working behind the scenes. If you recall, we've got the Riverside Ponds that we have to relocate in line. That was a hazard mitigation grant that we got. We're using that design activity to basically re-study the Napa River hydrology to, I guess I'll say, re-refine what the 100-year flood event would look like as far as the volume of water that would come through the channel. Because as part of the bridge project, we have to demonstrate to FEMA that anything that we put in the river channel isn't going to block the water or cause, you know, the floodwaters to back up. And under the current flood flows, we can't build the bridge high enough to demonstrate that we won't block that water. So we're using the pond project to come up with a different volume of water, which, instead of being here, we hope will be down here. And then the bridge will be here, and we then can demonstrate to FEMA that there is no net increase in the base flood elevation. So we're capturing the data and basically stealing it and moving it upriver at no cost to the bridge project. And we're doing that while we're waiting for our funding to come in from NVTA. So we basically have the plans complete for the bridge, we have the hydrology complete for the Riverside Ponds, and they're importing that data upstream, and we should have that shortly. And over the next handful of months, we'll be working on the certificate of no rise that we have to submit to FEMA and our local floodplain administrator, which is the Planning and Building Department. We'll be completing the environmental review, which will be the SEQA document. We've already had our early consultation with Fish and Wildlife and the Regional Board, and the Regional Board said, as long as we're above the ordinary high watermark, they don't have any problem with what we're doing. Fishing games similarly, because we're, all of our work activity is going to be outside of the river channel, with the exception of a few trees that we're going to relocate. And then the cool thing is that we're going to repurpose the bridge that we bought for the Berry Street Bridge, bolt on another 10-foot section that we have to purchase, and then that will be sufficient to span the river. So my goal is to have that bridge installed and complete by September or, I'll just say November of 2020. And that's when the funding kicks in. So I want to be ready to go out to bid probably in March or April of 2020, have my contractor ready to go, have the contract awarded, and give them the notice to proceed July 2nd of 2020, which is the beginning of the fiscal year. Our balance of our grant funds will have been authorized, and then we'll start full-blown construction.
All right. Question, even if you had all of the funding in-house today, you still couldn't start building because of the whole permitting process that you need to go through?
Correct.
Okay. So it's not necessarily a money thing, because that could be advanced, but it's the permitting and the process?
I think it's several hurdles that we have to go through. The biggest one was the hydraulics and the FEMA no-rise, and then how do we, and that's several tens of thousands of dollars to do that study. And rather than this, the bridge project paying for it, or the city paying for it, we got the grant to pay for it.
Awesome. Any other questions?
Yeah, Director Kern, thinking of the bridge coming on this side, someone asked me recently about Silverado Plaza, referring to this area around the hall here and behind the police station. Is that something that you know about, or Director, or City Manager Feig, do you know about Silverado Plaza? Is it more than a concept, or is it something someday?
There's a site plan referred to as the Sharpstein Plaza.
Sharpstein Plaza, maybe that's what it was.
And so we created a site plan about it a little over a year ago, and there's a couple of references to it in the general plan that talk about this entire plaza that we currently sit on today, the community center, the parking lot, the space between the Sharpstein Museum and the police station, as being a future plaza. One of the necessary projects to assist with that is this bridge connection, something that connects this side of the river to Pioneer Park. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone in the public with any questions? Please, Karen. You have to go to the podium for the folks at home. Should you so choose, share with us your name and your address, but you're not required to do so.
Karen Chang, 367 Myrtle Dale Road. And I'm just a few hundred feet from the top of the Napa River. And so we just had some really heavy rains this, a month ago. And it occurred to me that if those rains had continued for a couple more days, say, and this has happened, where the inflow of water stalls, I mean, if you follow the meteorologists, that can happen. So Mike is planning the highest point with the 100-year, which is within, I guess, historical data. However, I wonder if that's sufficient. Mozambique and Zambia, you know, just got hit with a cyclone of, you know, proportions that they've never had before. Nebraska just got warm rain on top of the snowpack, and that is what caused their flooding. So I just bring this up because we're not in ordinary times anymore.
The challenge, yeah, the challenge we would have is, if you build for the 1,000-year flood, we'd never build anything. And then we'd be in a bit of a challenge there, but I can, I appreciate that concern.
Karen makes a good point, to be conscious, to be conscious of this changing climate situation. So I appreciate that input.
We've actually had stormwater back up into downtown probably 15 years ago or so because the city drains, the storm sewers drain into there, and once the water gets up above the pipe that goes into the river, it backs up. So we have had in the past water up into downtown, and I don't think we've actually had it get into any of the storefronts, but people who are around longer than I have could probably tell you.
Well, I've only been here 20 years, so I...
It's a long time.
Yeah, I don't remember any flooding here.
In downtown.
And my neighbors don't either, but I'm considered in the floodplain.
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 The other challenge we have with this particular bridge, and it's creating the pedestrian bridge, while it's very convenient for connectivity, it's also solving an issue we have with fish and wildlife because of the walkway down below they are not satisfied with and are challenging us to have removed. And the only way that we can remove that without, you know, cutting off half the town from a connectivity standpoint is to find another way over, which is why this was a good solution, so.
Oh, I love the idea of the bridge. No objection to the bridge at all. It's just that I think we have to think outside of the ordinary.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Mike, I continue to appreciate your creativity and how you get one project to pay for the other. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, next we have a presentation by Napa County District 4 Supervisor Alfredo Pedrosa. This is further proof, ladies and gentlemen, that Calistoga does not have to go to the county, the county will come to Calistoga.
That is true.
Supervisor Pedrosa, welcome back always. Good to see you. And I'm sure during the course of your presentation, you'll explain why you've left your district to come to our district to give this presentation.
That is very true. And let me say, Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for giving me this opportunity to come before you. I was very happy to see the new lovely bridge. Congratulations on that. And I will say, you have the best cycling store in Napa County. I was here during the tractor parade, and I went across the street, bought a couple of gears. I just have yet to ride my bike from my home to Calistoga and back.
It's not that far.
It is, it is. I would be compelled by your wine bars. But again, thank you for the opportunity. As the mayor said, my name's Alfredo Pedrosa. I am your county supervisor for the 4th District Supervisor Dylan, who is your district supervisor, might be coming in shortly. I think it was on her calendar to be here as well. But I also have the honor of representing you, our cities, and our county on MTC. And as of this month, I had the privilege of being elected the vice chair of MTC, which is quite an accomplishment for Napa County. And at the end of the day, I just want to bring back more dollars to Napa County, whether it's to fund capital projects or new programs, it's just a great position to be in. The last time we had a representative climb to those ranks was Senator Bill Dodd, where he was actually the chairman. So the goal for today is just to give you all a quick overview of what MTC does, how we do it, and some of the things that I see on the horizon. And my goal is just to make sure that you all are informed. I understand that not everyone interacts with MTC. Those on NVTA get a little bit more of a dosage into what we do, but for the other councilmembers, again, I just want to make sure we're a resource. So let's see if I know how to work technology. So again, I've already covered that. We'll talk a little bit about regional measure.
Just sorry, MTC, for some folks, is the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, which covers the nine counties of the Bay Area.
Perfect.
Of which, even though we're far from a metropolis here in Calistoga, they are responsible for our planning guidance, et cetera, for transport.
Perfect. And we will touch a little bit about what the mayor just kind of articulated. We talk a little bit about some of the future projects that I see on the horizon, and some of the things that you might have heard, the word casa, casa, as a compact, I know it's a housing discussion, and we'll quickly go over some of the elements, but also at the end, I want to reserve any time to answer any questions from the council and the audience. So as Mayor Canning was articulating earlier, it's comprised of 21 commissioners, 18 voting members. Again, I have the privilege of serving Napa County for four years, and I'm also on the NVTA, which is Napa Valley Transportation Authority. As the mayor said, it's comprised of the nine Bay counties. So we have Napa County, Solano, Sonoma, Santa Clara, Alameda, Contra Costa, Marin, San Mateo, and San Francisco. So you can quickly see the range of counties is from the big cities like San Jose, San Francisco, Oakland, to small communities like Napa County, San Luis, and Calistoga. And that really presents a really unique challenge of how do we make sure you're investing in regional transportation systems, but also investing in local communities? So how many of you have been on BART? The ferry? Who has a Clipper card? Exactly. And those are the things that, while we may not directly benefit in our community, we still have to invest in the regional system because we're all part of the region. Whether BART comes into the valley or not, it's really getting us to think regionally, but also acting locally. And that's been one of the best lessons I've had on MTC is, when we were talking about R-18, we were talking about, you know, the 100-year, the 100-year program, and we were And that's been one of the best lessons I've had on MTC is when we were talking about regional measure three is how do we make sure that we're investing in BART, but also getting the mayor of Oakland, Mayor Shaft and Mayor Sam McCarty from San Jose to see the benefit investing in Napa County, making sure that we have the resources to do the capital projects and programs. So here's a little bit about kind of how MTC functions, what we do. On the left side of the house, we talk about project. This is where we look at the long-range future of the Bay Area. We put out plans like Plan Bay Area 2040, the Horizons Plans, which talks about the resiliency of communities. If a seven-pointer earthquake happens, we need to be prepared for that. We need to plan appropriately. So on that side of the house is a planning function of MTC. The other side is also investing in funding. We have built bridges. We invest in infrastructure programs. We invest in the express lanes, expanding the express lane programs. That's part of what MTC does as well. And invest in local CMAs, the local transportation authorities. And then again, as I mentioned, some of the programs that we spearhead is Clipper, whether we expand that, whether we automate it, really using technology as a new way to deliver services. On the right side of the house is the advocacy effort. And part of what we have to do at MTC is as state legislation is occurring, and many of you know about some of the aggressive stances that this administration has taken on transportation, we need to make sure that we're at the table talking about our local concerns as local communities, but also making sure that we're partners to the state. They are a partner in providing funding to MTC. Our annual budget is over $2 billion for the Bay Area. It's quite a big budget and we allocate that and again, the nine Bay Area counties and communities. So some of the things that we do to bring money back home, you know, we've provided $9.3 million in transit and operating funds. This is deployed through the local transportation authority that the mayor of Calistoga chairs and I have the honor of serving as his vice chair. But also in highway funds, alternative, alternative transportation programs and again, planning efforts that NVTA takes on, whether it's the congestion corridor or some of the behavioral studies that we do to look at how people move from point A to point B. I mentioned earlier about regional measure three. If you voted for the bridge tolls, thank you. I understand there's a concern about the cost of that, but Napa County did very well in this. The regional measure three, it's again, the dollar increase phasing up to $3, had a expenditure plan of $4.5 billion. One of my goals as your representative is trying to make sure Napa County got its fair share and got a specific carve-out and we did. We got $20 million for the Sausal Junction project. First time ever Napa County has had a specific alignment. And let me tell you, there were some commissioners saying, why is Napa County getting anything? But that's where we had to negotiate and respond and say, look, we're going to support WADA, we're going to support BART, but you also have to support Napa County. And by the way, many of you visit our valley and you don't like to sit in traffic. So we're also responding to that and many of our workers also commute, our workforce commutes into Napa. So it was really a win-win. We also have access to $100 million to compete for State Route 37. Whether you believe in climate change or not, all I ask you to do is go back to December 2017, when there was severe flooding on 37 and what happened? It closed. There was a diversion effect and we all paid the price because of that. The city of Nevada was severely impacted. So part of what we have to do is there's a sense of urgency with 37 and we've seen what happened recently as well. So we created an MOU with MTC BATA, which runs the bridges in Sonoma, Solano, Napa and Marin to look at the feasibility of potentially creating a toll bridge or creating another mechanism to elevate that roadway because it is severely impaired when you see a pretty big storms. The other part, there's $250 million that we're going to be able to be competitive with and this was allocated to the Bay Area. So some of the things we do with the director of NVTA, we meet with our other colleagues and again, we negotiate pretty fiercely to make sure Napa County is getting enough, as much money as we can to bring it back home. These are just some of the infrastructure projects that have a lot of name ID, folks know about them, which is a huge improvement. And I know some of the questions that folks ask because some of these are centralized in Southern, Southern County. But again, we're all part of the region. We all commute into Napa. This is going to be a huge project. Total cost is around $35 million. So if you can see, again, I'm not a traffic engineer, but what causes traffic is when you have all this disruption. So when you can have better flow and imagine coming into Napa and not having a stoplight right there at the junction of 221 and 29, that's going to be a huge improvement. So that project is well underway and again, we got $20 million allocated to this project. The next one is State Route 29 in Carneros. So I know that's really hard to see, but if you look at the farthest right lane, that lane is going to be free flow. So right now that lane stops at the light. In the future, that lane is going to be free flow. It's not going to stop at the light. So again, when you couple that with a previous project, you can definitely see the traffic flow is significantly going to improve and we're all going to see the benefits of that. And at the same time, we want to make it harder for folks to go to Sonoma County. So the Vine Trail, you know, the mayor and I have had a lot of conversations about this. This is just some of the things we've been talking about, but at the county, we are very supportive of the agreement that we had on the easements. We'll be coming back on the alignment issues. That's a discussion for a later day, but we are very supportive of those efforts. There was some funding provided by MTC for this effort. So some of the things that I've been looking at too is, you know, we do need to invest in infrastructure, but we also have to try new things. We have to look at technology as a friend and a partner. So one of the things that we're working on is a pilot program that we've been working on for two years. And the genesis behind this was to bring the wine industry together and the hospitality industry together at the table to talk about traffic. And let me just tell you a quick story of how this is going to work. In Seattle, Loom, which is a data, data analytics company we're working with, Amazon was expanding and Amazon was getting more employees. So they had to expand their buildings. They had to expand their surface lots because local communities require parking ratio. So Amazon kept saying, gosh, we're building more surface lots and everyone is coming in their individual car, right? So they said, we have to try something different. So they used Loom to look at and track HR and operations and attorneys, bless this, and they started tracking their employees. They all volunteered to participate in the pilot. And after Amazon gathered all this data, they realized that a core group of their employees, a critical mass was living in a town 10 minutes away and they were all getting in their individual car and they needed to provide an alternative. So Amazon provided an Amazon bus. So they got people to get out of their cars. They started paying them the moment they got on the bus because they can be productive. But again, they needed the data to really understand employee mobility. What Loom is doing for us is they can't, we don't have one critical mass. We don't have one critical employee that can move the needle. You all have tried to be innovative and I appreciate that. One of the things that Loom is going to do is they're going to work with many employers. They believe that if they can aggregate all that data from all the employers, that there will be a critical mass that we can move the needle on. So let's make some assumptions. Say that there's 100 employees or 50 employees that live in American Canyon that go to work at 8 and leave at 5. And some of them work at the Meritage in South Napa. Some of them work at La Salcogas. Some of them work in the new resorts that you're building. Now we have a critical mass where we can provide a different mode of transportation, whether it's car sharing or public transit or your private taxi. It's just getting the data and that's what Loom is going to do for us. We got over a million dollars from MTC to pilot this project and we, we made a pitch to the vendors and also pitched to Visit Napa Valley of also being financial partners in it. We may strike out and that's okay, but we have to try new things because our future I don't think is expanding Highway 29 or Silverado Trail. It's using technology to incentivize people, to incentivize our visitors, our employees to change their behavior from getting in their individual car. And right now it's the most convenient way of doing so. But again, I think with technology, we'll be better prepared to address that. A little bit about CASA and I'll wrap up. This was a compact that was passed with a blue ribbon committee that was created. I, I learned a little bit about it on the backend. It was led by Bay Area Cities. These are some of the elements that are in there. One of the things that we have to acknowledge is there is a housing crisis, but the housing crisis is different. The housing crisis is different in San Francisco. The housing crisis is different in Calistoga. But the fact is, we do need to do more to provide opportunities for those that wish to work and live in their community to do that. CASA tries to address some of that. MTC and ABAC did not endorse it. They said, here's a menu. Let's identify of the menu, what could we tolerate? Recognizing local control is so critical because that's what shapes our communities and makes it special, but there are things that we have to do a better job of. Sometimes it's not throwing money at a problem, it's the process that makes housing unbuildable. And that's the process that we can control as elected officials. So there are some streamlining, streamlining efforts that the CASA compact addresses. There's also some tenant protections, eviction protections. I, I don't support it all carte blanche, but I do support some of it. Public surplus, looking at lands that government owns, making those available for housing. I think it's a great idea. Again, providing incentives for local jurisdictions to meet their housing numbers is a good one. And look, you've heard Governor Newsom, who has made some pretty bold statements now, making sure jurisdictions are meeting their housing numbers. He's already talked about linking SB 1 funding, which is our precious gas tax, which we all, your public work folks really want to make sure are not earmarked. But he's made comments about if cities and local municipalities are not producing housing, we're going to withhold transportation dollars. That's a huge concern to local communities. So my objective is to be at the table, making sure we're shaping a policy that's tolerable for local communities like ours, but also making sure that we acknowledge we have to do a better job of delivering housing. I know Calistoga has done a great job and I appreciate that, but not every, not every community has done that. Some of the concerns, the regional funding measure is a huge concern. I think local communities have to keep those tools in their tool belt to address it for infrastructure and so forth. The regional housing enterprise, again, it's a concern. I think we, we can do a better job of creating another agency to talk about housing. I think ABAC, which is Association of Bay Area Government, I think they can maybe reform and do a better job of addressing that. So with that, I covered a lot of information very quickly. I want to be respectful of your time and I've had an all-day board of supervisor meeting as well. But again, thank you, Mayor and council members for the opportunity to come before you and I'm happy to answer any questions on this or any other matter.
Thank you Supervisor. We appreciate that and thank you for representing us on MTC, giving the smaller communities a, a big voice at the big table now. Thank you. Council members, any questions on what they're working on for us?
Supervisor, thank you for coming. The $2 billion budget, what's the source of the funding for the MTC?
Yeah, so a lot of it's federal funding. Councilmember Williams, so we get funding from the state and we get funding from the federal government. Then it's also your local sales tax, right? So it's a combination of all those efforts. I can provide you a little bit more information about the budget if you'd like.
That's fine. That helps. And then supposing Napa County said, you know what, really just really don't want to participate in this, is this a mandatory obligation? Is the county obliged to do it? Could the supervisor say thanks, but no thanks?
You know, that's a great question. I've never been asked that in terms of whether we would have the legal authority to withdraw from the Bay Area. What I would caution us with is the amount of, the consequences on funding if we were not to participate, I think would be pretty detrimental to our region.
There would be pros and cons, but theoretically is my question. Theoretically, could, I mean, is the state say to the counties, you must join this commission?
Yeah, I, again, I, I will get you an answer on that. I have not been imposed that so far, but thank you for asking.
My concern is that would fall into the category, if you're not part of it, it gets done to you versus you doing it, so.
There's going to be pluses and minuses, but theoretically we, it's helpful to know.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Anyone in the public? Any questions about the MTC? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Supervisor Pedrosa, thank you for covering the meeting tomorrow. I appreciate that. Nelson, thank you for getting him here. Nelson's one of the aides to the Board of Supervisors. They're the ones who do all the work. All right, moving on to consent calendar. There's one item on the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion on this item as presented unless anyone would like the item pulled. It's the minute, so hopefully.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, the second by Councilmember Williams. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. There are no public hearings. We're going to move on to general government. Item number four, resolution approving amendment number 13 of Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District Agreement number 1926, water supply contract with the city of Calistoga for water supply from the state water project. The recommended action is consideration of adopting a resolution. Taking us through this will be Director Kern. Hello, Mike.
Good evening. Mike Kern, Public Works Department. The item before you this evening is a resolution that would authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement that we have with the Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. That would then allow the county to enter into an amendment with the State of California Department of Water Resources for the state water project, water that we get from the delta through the NBA. It seems complicated and it kind of is. We joined the state water project in 1982 with the construction of the NBA water line that basically takes water from Napa's treatment plant on the 12 in Jamison Canyon and they treat it and pump it up to us. It provides anywhere from half to 60% of our total water supply currently. Probably the most important thing about this amendment, there's some housekeeping issues, better accountability and transparency with the Department of Water Resources on how they manage their capital projects and their, their charges back to the, to the members. But it extends the state water project contract from its current expiration date of 2035 to 2085. That's very important, not only for Calistoga, but for a lot of, for all the water agencies that take this water, because many of the capital projects that they have to build require significant capital investment, big money. And for that money to be spent and then amortized over, let's say, the next 15 years, the water rates would be astronomical. This allows those investments to be spread out over a 65-year period, basically. Not that anybody's going to go take out a loan for 65 years, but in theory you could do, you know, maybe two major bond issuances or multiple smaller ones, but you've got an extended period of time to, to pay that back. So very, a similar analogy would be if you're buying a home, you can have, you can have a choice of doing a 15-year mortgage or a 30-year mortgage. And depending on your financial wherewithal, a 15-year mortgage might be in your best interest, but for most folks, a 30 or even a 40-year mortgage are, are what they land on because it helps to soften that, that financial impact to their budget. So that's really what this is about. The item was before the, the flood control board this afternoon. I haven't heard whether or not they approved it or not, but I'm going to assume that they did. All of the other member agencies, so it's city of Calistoga, city of Napa and city of American Canyon are going through very similar discussions for amendments to their contracts with the county. And once the three of us have ratified it, then the county will execute the parent agreement with DWR. DWR did prepare an EIR through numerous public hearings and public meetings. That EIR was adopted and promulgated by the Department of Water Resources. So one of the findings that is in the resolution before you is to, to make the finding that that environmental process was done adequately and meets the needs to address all of the environmental impacts associated with the extension of the contract. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, questions of Director Kern?
Director Kern, so is the contract that we would execute, is that a binding contract through 85, supposing the city, you know, 10 years from now or sometime in the future decides we don't want to be a part of this water project, this water system anymore? Are we locked into it, do you know, or could we opt out?
I, I believe we can opt out, but if there are any significant capital expenditures that either the county or the Department of Water Resources has, has made that are a direct benefit for us and, and they've built us into their payback equation, if, if we pulled out, there would probably be a, you know, early withdrawal penalty.
And then I have another question. Thank you for that. So the water we get comes through the Barker's Slough, I understand, and, and there was talk once upon a time about building the processing plant farther up the Sacramento River so it would be processing water that was closer to the source and fresher because now it has to process the water that has, you know, has gone through the slough and, and, you know, was fairly downstream. There's all kinds of contaminants that all the, that you have to deal with and the people down there in Barker's Slough. Is there any talk now about building a processing plant farther up, up the river beyond the delta so that there's not so much work in trying to cleanse the water before it gets to us?
So I think a little bit of a clarification is important that the water that is delivered from the Barker's Slough is treated to state standards. So it, it meets all of the drinking water standards. So it's, it's not polluted water that we're, we're providing to our customers. It does have its challenges oftentimes because, you know, in low-flow conditions, it can be brackish or it can be, you know... be brackish, or it can be, you know, have a lot of sediments and those kinds of things that make the treatment process more challenging. One of the things that the NBA folks are looking at is what they call the alternate intake project, which would be a relocation of Barker Slough or basically moving it on the main stem of the Sacramento River. So it would be, right now, geographically Barker Slough is over here by Rio Vista. Sacramento is over here, so it would be finding a place where we could take water directly from the Sacramento River, which is obviously of better quality, and it has the potential for not being constrained through what I'll call pumping restrictions due to fish and aquatic habitat. It's a very expensive project. We've been working closely with our counterpartors in Solano County, which rely on the NBA water as well, to try and package or put together, you know, what would this alternate project look like? How much would it cost? And how much capacity would each entity want to buy in on?
So it's still a possibility.
It's a possibility. It's not, it's something that we're all looking at for long-range planning. The pumping restrictions from an environmental perspective are, I think, what's driving this the most, and then water quality is secondary.
Thank you. And then the EIR, is that in our package? I didn't see that.
No, it's two, 10 binders, that thing.
So we're supposed to find that it's satisfactory? Is it, I mean, have you looked at it?
I wasn't planning on looking at it. It went through the public review process, Department of Water Resources, you know, I have to, you know, take them at their, at faith that they did an adequate job in reviewing the environmental impacts and appropriate mitigation measures for this extension. We're not the only contractor, you know, that is involved in the state water project. It goes all the way up to Bute County and all the way down to Los Angeles, so there were thousands of eyes on that document.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Anyone in the public with any questions on this item? All right, I'll bring it back to the council. So the recommended action this evening is consideration of adoption of the resolution. I'll entertain a motion on that item.
So moved.
Aye, second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Moving on, item number five, resolution approving adoption of the Public Agency's Post-Employment Benefits Trust and Adopting Pension Rate Stabilization Program, PRSP, and other post-employment benefits, also known as OPEB, pre-funding policy and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for administrative services with Public Agency Retirement Services, also known as PARS, P-A-R-S. Recommended action is consider, consideration of, to adopt the resolution. Taking us through this item tonight will be Gloria, Administrative Services Director. Welcome back, Gloria.
Well, good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. So the item before you, like Mayor said, it was to establish a pension rate stabilization program, to adopt a policy, and to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement for administrative services with the Public Agency Retirement Services. And just to give you a little bit of background, in 2012, the Government Accounting Standard Boards, which is the individual entity that we follow when we're doing our governmental accounting reports, financial reports, they issued statement number 68, which is accounting and financial reporting for pensions, which requires us to recognize a net pension liability, also known as unfunded actuarial accrued liability, because we are members of the CalPERS system. And then in 2015, the same board, GASB, the Government Accounting Standard Boards, issued statement number 75, which is accounting for post-employment benefits other than pensions, and this also requires us to recognize a net pension liability. You'll see both of these net pension liabilities recorded on our statement of net position in our financial statements. And so establishing, adoption of these documents establishes an approved Internal Revenue Section 115 trust fund to set aside funds for a pension rate stabilization program for future retirement contributions to CalPERS and for the OPEB cost. Tonight, we have the individual from the Public Agency Retirement Services, Kevin O'Rourke, who's going to be doing a presentation, go through a little bit of how this plan will work should the council consider to move forward with approving this trust fund plan. So Mr. O'Rourke comes from us, from Fairfield.
All the way from Fairfield.
Wow, over the river and through the woods, Kevin.
That's right, I tell you.
He's got extensive background in government. He's been a city manager, now retired, and so.
35 years.
Yeah, so I'll let him do the presentation.
Thank you. And before I begin, you should see the other guy.
I was going to ask if that was from being the city manager for so long.
It was.
Okay. A little skin off the nose.
It just never got fixed, you know. Hopefully, I'm going to drive this right. Look at that, first shot out of the barrel. So again, thank you, Mayor and council, for allowing me to present to you a little bit about PARS. As a, city managers don't die, we can back as consultants and bother our peers for the rest of our lives. And so I am working with PARS, and it's an easy company to work with because we're not selling widgets. This is important stuff that PARS offers, which is, you'll see 35 years' worth of different pension and retirement types of products and services. And when we have to deal with CalPERS as we do, it's kind of nice to have a set of alternatives available beyond CalPERS. This slide shows you the, two of the three wheels, or three, two of the three legs of the chair here. PARS is the administrator, and Highmark Capital is the investment manager. Highmark is a subsidiary of US Bank, and US Bank itself is the trustee. In other words, we don't handle the money. Highmark doesn't handle the cash. It gets, it goes to US Bank. And here are the players that Calistoga has been dealing with and will deal with. Specifically, Gloria will be dealing with and dealing with Andrew Brown, should you adopt this and get the, he'll be our senior portfolio manager from, he's located nearby, so he could actually, he likes coming out here to meet with people, so especially over lunch. Who doesn't? So the, what you have in front of you this evening, what you're being asked to adopt is what's called a combination 115 trust. We have the two buckets up there, very fancy picture here, where you would be able to pre-fund your medical retirement liability, which I understand is a little bit less than of concern, and as most entities, it's your pension liabilities that you're most concerned about. What is important here is the PARS IRS approved. We went and sought a private letter of rolling from IRS. We got that, and so we've been approved to provide this. We've been doing that a little over three years now, and before that, you could only either keep the money locally in your general fund reserve or pay it directly to CalPERS. What we've discovered is most public agencies don't want to give CalPERS any more money than they have to, so the thought of being able to keep it locally and control the investment has, has a lot of appeal. OPEB, actually, so I was going to say, we have over 300 agencies, by the way, have adopted both the OPEB and the Pension Rate Stabilization Plan. Just on the pension side of the house, over 90 cities have adopted it in the last couple of years. And the reason that is, is that CalPERS announced they're dropping what's called a discount rate from 7.5% to 7%. I'm going to show you in a minute what that does for, to Calistoga. Right now, you're paying as you go. It's kind of hard to read that, I'm sorry, but about $2.3 million a year for pension costs. Should you adopt the, this 115 trust, the discount rate would go from 3.56% to 7.0%. That would equate to about a 30% to 36% drop in your actual liability, which is obviously very, very significant. Again, the Pension Rate Stabilization Plan, one of the things I wanted to show you is we did an analysis based upon your own actuarial report that was done in June, I think, of 2017. Your actual liability is 35.1 million. You have assets of 25.1 million, which means that, and your unfunded liability is 10 million. So you are at 71.5% in terms of the funded ratio, which is excellent. We find most entities are 60% to 80%. So if you're at 71%, 72%, you're really kind of in the sweet spot. That's a good place to be. The employer contribution for 1819 was about $1.1 million. The issue that brings this to your attention, all public agencies across the state, is CalPERS' drop of the discount rate from 7.5% to 7%. And what that does is that will increase from 1.1 million to $1.9 million, your annual contributions by fiscal year 24, 25. So agencies are trying to get ahead of the curve and trying to prepare for this by adopting these 115 trusts. So why would you want to pre-fund your pension obligations? I've alluded to some of it already, but the complete local control over assets. Like I said, before we came up and got this 115 trust approved by IRS, the only other choice was to give it to CalPERS or keep it as a general fund reserve, which would mean it's really not being set aside completely for your pension liabilities or your retiring medical liabilities. So you keep local control over it. It is an irrevocable trust, which means you have the ability as a local entity to make decisions about using that money. One of the biggest problems as a city manager, preparing a budget, is what will CalPERS do to us next year in terms of how they will choose to change rates, discount rates, amortization periods, et cetera. What you're able to do is you'll be able to keep this money locally, and if you were all of a sudden to get hit, as we all have been over the years, by CalPERS with a sudden new change in cost to you, you could actually go into the assets that you've set aside in the 115 trust and take from it, because it is your money, and apply it to your current year issue or problem. Similarly to that, a number three is some, one city council, I think it was Fresno, said, hey, this is a rainy day fund. We actually will have a reserve available to us so that in addition, beyond anything that CalPERS might do to impact what you're paying, if you have a local issue or problem in a current year, you would have as a tool available to you, the ability to take money out of your own 115 trust and apply it to that current problem. Diversified investing, why is that important? You are restricted on the government code in how you invest. The government code section that your general fund invests in is probably making you 1.5% to 2% right now. We would, if, we are governed by a different government code section with the 115 trust. And you can go pretty much anywhere you want to go, from conservative to what's called capital appreciation, swinging for the fences. You're going to try to get easily, you'll see how we've done, 3%, 4%, up to 6% or more, and I'm going to show you that in a second. So you have an opportunity to invest differently. So I wanted to show you this, and again, this is, Highmark Capital is the investment manager, so if you're investing the first year, boy, let me tell you, 2018 was not a good year. So if you take a look at that, you know, in our art grade thing, we like to say is that we lost less than CalPERS. That's a heck of a sales point. But if you look at three years and five years and 10 years, conservative at the bottom, you can see it was three, over three, almost three, and then over five, which would be much better than what you would have been able to make if you left the money within the general fund. So program fees, what does it cost you? What's, you know, what are the downsides to all of this? Well, it would cost you 60 basis points. I was just sitting there doing the math on a calculator. 60 basis points for about $100,000 is about 600 bucks. So, and that is what you would go to PARS, US Bank, and to Highmark Capital. So if you were asking yourself, what does it cost you? What are the key program advantages? I won't waste your time going through all 10, but I do like to get to the ones where all the noes are. There are no startup costs. There's no minimum annual contribution amounts or minimum annual fees. Those fees are charged to you until assets are actually in the trust. There are no trading fees, no termination fees or restrictions. So you would say, well, what's the downside of, again, what's the downside of all this? Well, that would be the fluctuations in the market, as we saw earlier, in terms of what the losses were in 2018 versus, you know, what it was over three years and five years. And we can even get, show you a longer picture of over 10 years, which shows a great productivity of funds. With that, I'll be quiet and answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Kevin. Councilmembers, questions, please? Kevin, how many other public agencies in the state of California are participating in this right now?
We have between OPEB and pension rate, over 300, 187 just for pension. And locally, you have the City of Yountville, City of Napa, and the County of Napa are all current PARS participants in this trust.
Thank you.
Yes.
You may recognize me. I was on a subcommittee of the city council in June of 2015.
Look at that. You kept the book, too.
Wow.
And it was myself and Jim Barnes were on that committee. We listened to the presentation, which was largely, was more detailed, actually, than this. At that time, we determined that the best course for the city was to make direct payments to CalPERS, and that's what we have done for two years. The result of those payments, I understand from our last audit, were not as dramatic as we expected, mostly because of the change from 7.5% to 7%. Had we not made those payments, I could tell you that we'd be in a lot worse shape than we are right now. I believe, based on the last information that I got, that we are, we actually had a smaller PERS payment due this year than we have in prior years. Looking at the report that I have before me here and what we heard before, I really haven't changed my mind. I still think that we're better off keeping the money a little more liquid. Admittedly, not as much interest as we might be able to earn, but we're a little more liquid. We could use that money for other purposes other than strictly pension and after, post-employment benefits or after-retirement benefits. The other thing is, is that as far as the after-retirement benefits are concerned, which with us is healthcare, health insurance, you may recall that there were two rather, maybe three noisy, almost bankrupted cities, Stockton, Vallejo, and San Bernardino. In all three of those cases, one of the ways they came out of the problem that they had was reducing the health insurance benefits of retirees, cruel though that is. The court has held that that can, that can be done and was done in all three of those cities. I'm a retiree of the city myself, so I'm certainly sympathetic to that, but we're not in a position where we're having to do that at this time. We're sitting in a pretty good cushion. I believe we would be making yet another advanced payment to PERS. While they did lose money in the last calendar year, I'm not sure whether they actually use a calendar year or a fiscal year when they, when they calculate that. But since the first of the year to present, the three major stock indexes are indicating somewhere between 11% and 13%, depending what they're using, which one of them that you're using. But I would say that the indexes are probably up at least 11% since the first of the year, which would benefit, to an extent, our investment in CalPERS. CalPERS also has a couple of other investments. They have real estate and a few other investments as well. So I think we're okay continuing with what it is we have been doing, and that is paying it down directly to CalPERS. And I think there's some other benefits to us, keeping the liquidity and also paying down things. For instance, when we have a reduced cost for our retirement, that works through to the enterprise funds. the enterprise funds, because the people that are city employees that work in the enterprise funds, we pay their CalPERS. So if we're using general fund money to pay the CalPERS, that's making it a little less expensive, perhaps, for the enterprise funds. So I think we, my personal opinion is that we stay with what we've been doing. We can enter this at any time if we think that we need to. That's just what my opinion is, based upon the work that we did in the committee about four years ago now.
Mr. Work.
The only comment I would make would be, in terms of performance, we've been outperforming CalPERS for the last 10 years. So in terms of the performance, the revenue that we can make, we've been outperforming them for 10 years. We can provide that.
But at the same time, you have several different investment strategies that we could go into that are, that range from a very conservative investment strategy to a, I'll call it less, I wouldn't say risky, strategy, but we would have our, you know, we would have to make a determination which one of those that we were to go into.
We, yeah, we basically offer you five different levels, from very conservative to what we call swinging for the fences. And part of what drives agencies to us is the fact that CalPERS tends to swing for the fences, and it's part of the reason why their performance hasn't been as good. And so a lot of the agencies are saying, we like local control, because we can control the level of volatility or fluctuation in terms of what we're doing. So we can pick conservative, or we can go capital appreciation. Whereas your options in giving it to CalPERS is, you know, it's, you don't have that. So again, it's the pleasure of the council, of course.
Appreciate that. Other council members, questions?
I didn't know about the, at least about the details of your meetings a few years ago, but my notes all over these pages are, why don't we just pay this down, which is what we've been doing? My inclination is the simpler approach is going to be a preferable approach.
And that was exactly what Jim and I came up with.
Yeah. And so if we have an obligation, pay it down. And, you know, I know, you know, we can possibly, we can roll the dice, you know, more or less aggressively, and maybe make a few more bucks, but I'd rather just pay it down when the obligation's occurred, get it off the books. And when something's this complicated, you know, it's less and less interesting to me.
I agree with Gary and Jim and Gary, they spend a lot of time doing this, and I think so far, we are doing good paying directly.
Okay. I'm certainly not impressed with PERS return, and they do swing for the fences, and you may know how many years in a row they've missed their mark, that all of us who've participated in it have certainly been impacted by. I don't know if you have that stat on your, top of your brain, how many times they've missed what they projected their return to be.
It's been pretty consistent over the last decade.
Yeah.
Yeah. They've been missing.
Every year. With that said, you know, I do appreciate the work that was done in this before, and kind of the conservative approach. If there's anything, Gloria and Dylan kind of brought this to us, is there anything we're missing, or why consider this at this time, understanding what our position and strategy has been over the last couple of years? Other than it's a new idea, which I appreciate.
Yeah, I think, I think we're always trying to be creative and bring different ideas to make sure we're paying off our pension liability. I believe when I first started, our unfunded pension liability was about 58%. And so the work of Gary and Jim, and the dedication of the council in paying off, you know, the last two years, $2.8 million towards that unfunded pension liability, has had an impact on us. And Kevin, I'm just going to talk for a minute, and please feel free to correct if I'm wrong, because I, you know, I think that, I think there's really two issues that we're looking at here. First is the issue of whether the council wants to pay off the unfunded pension liability. And, you know, the choice to do that and to continue to do that is the direction that staff has received. That's how we budget now. Additional revenues, we're setting aside, and we're going to continue making, setting funds aside to pay off unfunded pension liability. The way the city does that now is really, in my understanding, what this is about. Currently, the city takes those monies, and we set them aside into what's called the local agency investment fund. It's a state fund where small agencies like us pool all of our money together and put them in a big investment pool. And it's a far lower number than the 1.5% to 2%. You know, over the last several years, as we had this $2.8 million set aside, it was anywhere from 0.3% to 0.8%. And the reason that the subcommittee wanted to do that, which was absolutely critical, is it was cash in the bank. We could use that for any purpose, for anything, and it was money that we were carving out over here. So even if the city decided, we're in a pinch, we want to take that $2.8 million, and we need to use it for whatever, you can always do that. This is a tool where you're essentially saying, rather than put that money aside into life, we're putting it aside into a Section 115 trust, which is a different investment tool. The money is still yours, it's still ours. Now, it does have some restrictions on it. It can only be used for pensions and OPEB, which was what we always intended it to be. We don't have to put money in unless it's intended to be for that. But there are, there is a different potential for greater returns. The city does always have discretion, and please correct me if I'm wrong. If the city council today said, yes, we wanted to go with this, and they put $1 million into this fund, in a day, a month, a year, they can take that same money and apply it towards CalPERS?
Yeah, absolutely. And you can, you can get out from us, you can terminate your agreement with us almost instantly. So you would be able to do exactly what you're saying.
So the only, the only thing I really want to add, and certainly if council feels like, you know, right now, we're good where we're at, you know, I think that's absolutely, you know, that's easy, there's no rush to do this right now. It was, it was really more a matter of, now's another opportunity where we can be a little bit more proactive, like we've always been, if we want to. And I don't think there's any rush. I think it's something we can think about more, we can study about more. We talked about it four years ago, we talk about it now, we can talk about it again if you so choose. But I just want to make sure that it, that the understanding is clear, that this is really more about what we're doing with those monies, as far as investing them, until we decide what we want to do with CalPERS.
Thank you. Gloria, any commentary?
The only thing I was going to add is that if we were to adopt this, doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to put money set aside. Is that correct?
That's correct. You can set this up. You don't have to put any money into the asset until you decide you want to do that. A lot of agencies will adopt it like this, early on in the new year, and then come back during the budget cycle and make determinations if you want to put money into it. And if I could make one other comment, it isn't an irrevocable trust, as Dylan's pointed out, but it can be used, as I tried to indicate earlier, for, whether it's, you know, pension cost changes that happen from CalPERS, or if you have an immediate need of using the fund, you could pay your current CalPERS payment with your asset from the trust, and making free up that general fund money then for whatever your problem is that you might have. So again, there's no cost to you if you want to set this up this evening, and if you want to come back at some point in the future and add something to it, you could do that.
Great. Appreciate that. Anyone in the public with any questions? All right. Recommended action is to adopt the resolution. Might I make a recommendation based on what I've heard here? Take it as a point of information. We're going into the budget process starting next month, and keep it in, I appreciate the clarification, because that helped on the, yeah, we're setting money aside anyway with the intent to put into, pay off PERS. This is just another mechanism to do so, and maybe that's something we consider as we talk through the budget.
Yeah, that clarification does help. Thank you, and thank you for coming as well, sir.
Entertain a motion if someone's willing to present it, or file it as information as we go through the budgeting process.
I move that we consider this at another time.
Okay. No motion needed, correct? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the sixth item on here. Set special city council study session for goal-setting and fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget review. The recommended action this evening is to discuss and set dates. This is, and you've heard me say this before, to the public here and the public at home, this is a very important part of the budget process. It's an important part of the budget process, similar to the budget process, that we get little to no participation on from the public. And then these goals are what we use to set the priorities financially for the community moving forward. So when it's the 11th hour question, and we're ready to pass the budget, and somebody asks, well, why would you do that? You can see from the dates listed here, it's a several-month process that we invite everyone to, different dates, different times, to try to be as flexible as possible. And always, if you can't make a meeting, you can find your local representative and have, weigh in on what you think our priorities should be. With that said, we do have some proposed dates, starting with Thursday, March 21st, which actually is a conflict, which I believe I made you aware of. The next one is Thursday, March 9th, May 9th, then Friday, May 10th, Tuesday, June 4th, and Tuesday, June 18th. This is the entire layout from goal-setting session through budget preparation for the next fiscal year. So immediately for consideration, I'd like to propose a change of date on the Thursday, March 21st, which is actually two days from now, as I won't be here. But obviously, this council can proceed without me, but I would make the request that we move that to either 3/28, if you're trying to maintain a Thursday, or 4/4. And that still gives us time to work through the rest of the process.
Is the rest of the rest of the council members available on the 28th, which is next Thursday?
No, I'm not.
How about the 4th?
The 4th is fine.
Councilmember Williams on the 4th?
That should be fine.
Councilmember Kraus?
Should be fine.
All right. And we'll clarify with the vice mayor as well. Any other conflicts from any other council members in any of these other dates?
That's a Thursday, is that right?
That's a Thursday, correct. Yep. Any other conflicts on dates, May 9th, May 10th, June 4th, June 18th? The 4th and the 18th are your regularly scheduled council meetings, anyway. All right, so with...
And is there an agenda issued for that, or how does the public know what the topics addressed are?
Yeah, let me go over them right now briefly. There are agendas for all these meetings. These are just done, it's done on a different day. We do the first one on Thursday. We spend a day at the fire station, and we start in the morning, about 9:00. We go through the, you know, current status of the budget. We go through capital improvement projects, and we actually work through the goals and objectives set forth by council. Each year, the council might tweak a goal. Sometimes we've accomplished certain things and we remove those, but this is a really important part of the process where the council, the public, are able to provide guidance to staff on what we need to put into the budget. So for example, when the council is committing money towards roads, you know, we might not know exactly what project yet is going to be ready for this year. We're going to have a pretty good idea, but the council can say, we want to do this project, or we want to see these restrooms completed at Lower Washington, or a particular project which staff just knows this now becomes part of the budget process. That way, between April 4th and the next meetings in May, staff can go prepare the actual budget documents to reflect the goals and objectives of the city council. And we do publish agendas in advance of those, of each one of these meetings.
I think a great example of that process is one of the goals, you know, for the last couple of years, and even more focused last year, was health and wellness for the community, community participation. Out of that came the recommendation for parking recreation services to be complementary to Calistoga residents, and we built money into that, and now we're realizing that as of January of this year. So everything from the unsexy stuff like water and sewer, all the way through parking recreation, public facilities, programs, et cetera. So very, very important part of the process, and all along, you know, lots of opportunity for community input, and we don't actually pass the budget until June 18th. And even if we come up to June 18th, all the way up to June 18th, and there's still some tweaks and modifications we want to make, we have until the last day of June under state law to pass a budget. So there is a cushion built in there.
I would say, works for every budget that I've been involved in, we have some adjustments made on the day that they got there.
But it is, it is an important process that I do encourage people to participate in versus, you know...
I have one question.
Complaining after the fact.
Will be possible to publish in Spanish the days that we're going to have the budget study, so, you know, the Latino community can have some input in.
Yes, absolutely. When we get to the, did you want it particularly for the budget session that we have? Because when we do the public notice, then we can absolutely make it available in Spanish along with the agenda.
Yeah, so I don't know if we can send some kind of notice to the school, and so the parents can be aware, you know, that we're going to have the budget study, and so if they have any, you know...
Input.
Input, you know.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll check with the schools. I'm sure they have flyers that go home with parents, so that's a great opportunity to provide them information.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the public, any questions? Any public conflicts with these dates? All right, with that said, I will, I will make a motion to set the dates with the modification changing from Thursday, March 21st to April 4th, and the rest of the dates will stand. Do I have a second, please?
I second.
Second by Councilmember Lopez Artega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be Tuesday, April 2nd already, at 6:00 PM. Thank you all, have a nice evening.